So we stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, thank you, everyone, for your patience. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I agree.
A motion for Tracy, a second from Rick. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And here, a motion on the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on September 8th, 2025.
Have a motion from Rick, a second from Ed. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action on the vouchers.
I move to approve general checking account vouchers totaling $327,395.33 as presented.
I'll second that.
A motion from Tracy, a second from Rick. Any questions on the vouchers? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. No public comment? Great, thank you. And we move on to our superintendent update.
That conference was on September 17th through 19th, last week Wednesday through Friday, in Madison, and the title of the conference was Creating Conditions for Success, which I think those four words, creating conditions for success, really describe a vital part of my job responsibility. And that same job responsibility for superintendents and district administrators across the state. Some highlights from the conference included greetings from both Governor Evers and from State Superintendent Underly. I attended sessions that included legal updates on Act 10 and also on the relationships between policies, handbooks, and contracts. Other sessions that I attended, including building a strong leadership team, having a positive impact on students, families, and community, leading through change, and legislative updates at both the federal and the state level. So it was a really valuable conference and enjoyed having it in Madison because it's a short travel spot for the conference, too. The next agenda item on the superintendent update is the Red Hawk highlights. And this being the second board meeting of the month, our admin team will come up and give highlights from things that have happened since the start of the school year at each of their schools. It looks like Marcia is going to start.
All right. Good evening. In these first 15 days of school...
Thank you. Their work allows us to begin identifying student needs and planning interventions and supports that will help each child grow. On top of the academics, our schools are starting to build excitement, of course, for the upcoming homecoming because Dress Up Week is always a big thrill at our levels. And most importantly, our teachers have been very intentional about building strong relationships with their students and creating classroom communities where children can feel safe, connected, and ready to learn. So we're off to a great school year.
Ed Northside, many of the same things that Marcia had shared were coming up on the end of iReady testing, so getting that data so that we can start forming groups and seeing what kids need more and supporting them in every way possible. Homecoming, the students and staff, of course, are looking forward to that. On top of all of that, two more things. One, our parents group, we had our first meeting last week, attended by some of our staff members, as well as bringing in some new families from other schools. And then lastly, outdoor ed. Our staff's working hard to make sure, because we have 277 sixth graders who will be attending, starting next week, not next week, the following week, though, for eight days, outdoor ed. And it really is a team effort, including the families coming in to learn the information to best support students on their one night away from home.
Good evening. We have a new course at the middle school this year that's Intro to Computer Science, and our students are absolutely loving it. Mr. Thomas came down from the high school for this class, and there has been excitement galore as the students are in the hallways racing their robots and having some friendly competition from one another. So that class has been an amazing addition in our offerings for our students. Today, we continue to work on a communication log that students are kind of taking the ownership of to be able to be at the hub of communication between home and school when it comes to the advisory activities, their iReady scores and progress, and some notes will be taken in advisory so that communication log will... We've been working on that, but it kicks off to families tomorrow. So we'll be looking for some feedback from families on that. Today, our web leaders went to the High Ropes Course, which is a great leadership opportunity for those leaders who are impacting our incoming seventh graders. And then finally, Friday night is our first rec night of the year. So if you are looking for something to do and you want a lot of Mountain Dew and cotton candy, you're welcome to come and join us at our rec night from 5:00 to 7:00 on Friday. Thank you.
Sounds like fun. All right. At the high school, it is... Last week, we had our Pathways to the Future event, that is a conference for our parents. And we didn't have necessarily the attendance that we were hoping for. It's a program that we are continuing to grow, but it is a... We had actually over a dozen different sessions, options for parents, partly looking at how to help students pick careers, and we had panels in to talk about various career paths. But a lot of pathway programs as well, such as how to find your place at Milton High School, understanding how the direct admit or Wisconsin Guarantee works, how to improve your ACT score, how to understand an IEP at the high school level, et cetera. So we had lots of workshops that are proud of the staff. They put those together. We're going to continue to grow that event and think about the best way to get the information out to our parents. It is, as was mentioned, is the third week of school, and everything seems to be rolling. Very active recently is FFA, FBLA, Fishing Club, and we're starting the marching band season. Mr. checks in the front row, I have to talk about marching band. The marching band was going to start their season this last weekend. They were scheduled to march at a new event at Northern Illinois, NIU down in DeKalb, Illinois. We got rained out. The rain doesn't work well with our synthesizers and all those marimbas, which don't do well in the rain. But we will be starting the competition season in Waukesha South on Saturday, Waukesha West on Sunday coming up. We're excited for that. Yes, and homecoming, I heard, is coming next week as well. So at the high school, obviously, that's a big week for us, as well as the rest of the district. Wednesday night, we have the Activities Night. On Thursday, I make note, that is the Wall of Honor inductions. We're very, very proud of that program. We have four outstanding inductees this year. So that is at 7:00 on Thursday. They include Ivan Fitz Randolph, Teresa Roche, Rod Hilton, and Bill Schrank are the four inductees this year. So we expect a good showing for that crowd. Some neat educators there. On Friday, obviously, is going to be our pep assembly. The parade is at 2:00. We have the football game, followed by the bonfire. On Saturday, we are have... It's Alumni Day, so we have, I'll be helping with some tours. The Class of 1985, Mr. Snell, will be there in the morning. The Class of 1975 will be giving a tour in the afternoon. We'll have a dance that night. So it is an exciting week. And then on Monday, we'll celebrate with a PD Day. And so our staff is actually busy planning for that. Math is going to be reviewing Desmos. That's the next pilot program they'll be working on. And then the rest of the staff will be working on Standards-Based Assessment with our folks, our consultant from CISA 6. Thank you.
Just a quick HR update. We have our HR committee on Wednesday, so I wanted to share with you all that we have a new HR specialist in, at the district office. Alexis Nelson is coming from the private sector, and she started on September 8th and is learning the ropes. So you'll see Alexis at our next HR committee meeting. And yeah, just a quick update.
Thank you to all the administrators for giving updates on things that are happening at all of their schools. And I want to reinforce that, as I've been out in schools since the start of the school year, I've seen just wonderful things happening, both in classrooms and in extracurricular activities. So it's great to have everybody back and to have the 25-26 school year off to such an outstanding start, thanks to the work of all of our staff.
And I'll just give one school board update. The school board will be in the homecoming parade this year, so please reminder to buy your candy and be ready for those of you who are able to be there. And we're excited to be a part of the homecoming event. It's going to be fun. And any questions for anyone or anything anyone wants to add?
I attended the Pathways event, and I was able to get into several of the presentations. I kind of roamed. And I went home and said to my husband, I wish that had been there when our daughter went to high school. I wish we had attended something like that with her. It was outstanding. And any parent of a young person who's looking or curious about a career path, it's probably the best way for them to get ideas and have their questions answered, and it just was outstanding.
The next agenda item in the superintendent's update is the Red Hawk recognition. This is a return of the Red Hawk recognition for the 25-26 school year. It is a program where staff have an opportunity to nominate their colleagues for board recognition. So we have our first five awardees for this school year who are with us tonight. They're going to be introduced by the board member representatives from each of their schools. When your turn is up, if you can come to the front, when your name is called, and stand next to the board member as your recognition is being handed out. And then once all five have been recognized, we're going to do a group picture of the five staff members and the board members.
Just one correction. Mr. Doomer is going to do all of the awards tonight.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Excited to bring this back. It's always great to recognize our staff. Abby Landry, come on first. So Abby was nominated by Nicole Schaefer. And Nicole wrote in her nomination for Abby, "Ever since Abby has arrived in the district, she has strived to elevate the music program. She does this through great musical productions, advocating for all students to have a place in her room and activities, working tirelessly to fundraise and allow students to grow and shine through their artistic abilities. We are lucky to have her." Here I go.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Next up, Renee Smith. Renee is a kindergarten teacher at East, and she was nominated by Joni Polten. Joni wrote, "Renee comes to work with a smile on her face each and every day and a positive attitude. She is a wonderful teacher. My own daughter had her 20 years ago, and her passion for teaching shows each and every day. She is caring and compassionate teacher that shows up for her students in school each and every day." Congratulations. Next up, Crystal Gross. Crystal is a sixth grade teacher at Northside, and she was nominated by Shawna Boons. Shawna wrote, "She always jumps in where she can and is positive and reliable for staff, interactive, as well as student interactions. She has had two of my children in her class, and they loved her teaching style and approachability, as well as her passion for teaching math, which really related to my children in a way that they felt confident and encouraged in their math ability while still striving to push themselves further." Congratulations. Number four, Kelly Smith. Kelly is a sixth grade teacher at Northside, and she was nominated by Anna Larson. Sometimes she refers to herself as the coolness.
So that is true.
Yeah. So as you read this, I think it makes sense. Anna wrote, "Kelly always goes above and beyond for her students and coworkers. She always keeps things lighthearted and brings humor into every situation, even the hard ones. Kelly shows her love and support to all her students every day and her appreciation for her coworkers, admin, and support staff every day with a smile and a witty comment." Congratulations. Last up tonight, Toni Jorgensen. Toni is a special ed paraprofessional at East, and she was nominated by Bethany Scott. Bethany wrote, "Toni goes above and beyond by making each student and staff member feel seen and special. Over the years, she has taken requests and painted canvases reflecting the interests of those at Milton East. Her work and dedication out of school hours to paint hundreds of canvases is an example of her commitment to building relationships and a positive school culture." Congratulations.
Before we close out that portion of the superintendent's update, or that part of the superintendent's update, I want to again congratulate our award winners tonight and also let the board know that we have a number of other people who have been nominated, so we will be bringing those at the second board meeting of every month. So we'll have some more staff members coming at each of those board meetings once a month. We also are looking for opportunities to bring student groups for recognition, as we have outstanding things happening, which we do throughout the year with our students. So you'll see that coming up at future board meetings, too. The next thing on the superintendent's update is an enrollment update. And this past Friday, September 18th was the third Friday, September 19th was the third Friday count. And that's the official count that the state does each year in the fall. We'll get those results back from DPI in about two weeks, and we will have that as an agenda item at the October 13th board meeting, where we bring the official count from the third Friday count. Today, I just want to give an unofficial update. It's looking like we're going to have a slight increase in our overall kindergarten through 12th grade enrollment from last year, but a larger decrease in 4K enrollment. If you remember, last year, we had our largest 4K class that we've ever had. And we and every district that I spoke with at the conference last week is seeing a fairly significant decline in 4K enrollment for last year. So ours has dropped quite a bit from last year's record high, but it's even lower than what our normal had been for a few years prior to that. And it's something that districts are seeing across the state as far as 4K enrollment. Between those two things, we're expecting a very slight decrease in 4K through 12th grade overall enrollment for the coming year. But again, that will be official at our next board meeting coming up. When we look back over the last 10 or so years, we've had very stable enrollment. We've had some slight increases and slight decreases year over year, but overall, very stable enrollment for the past 10-plus years. And again, that official enrollment and our resident count and our open enrollment in and outs for this year, those counts will be coming at the next board meeting on October 13th. Excuse me. Any questions on those topics?
Quick question, Rich. Thanks for that info. In two weeks, will we have an idea what the state overall registration is? I mean, if we're down slightly, is the entire state down slightly more or flat? Or will you have that by then?
If we have that info, I'll bring it to that next board meeting on 13th. Not certain that we'll have it for the whole state at that time.
Thank you.
But I think that's always a good thing to look at, is how do we compare to, and what's the overall trend across the state. One last thing on that enrollment topic. We know that there's a lot of new housing going up across our district, both last spring and summer and continuing this fall. Some of that have, some of those locations have housing or have people, residents, living in it and resident students. So that'll impact our resident-student count. One of the things that we've seen that I want to preview is that that also might have an impact on our open enrollment out, because we've had a number of families move into our district because there's new housing available, but they're moving from a neighboring district where their students have always attended and they want to, and then they have to open enrollment out if they want their students to remain at that school. So we'll get those official numbers, but I wouldn't be at all surprised if we see an increase in our resident count, but also an increase from previous years in the number of open enrollment out for that very reason. And then the last agenda item under the superintendent's update is School Board Appreciation Week is coming up on October 5th through 11th. We don't have another school board meeting before then, so I wanted to share that school board members' roles and the school board as a group can oftentimes be very underappreciated, but it's an incredibly vital and important role. We have a strong school district because we have, and we have had, strong school board, school board as a whole and strong school board members. So we will be recognizing the school board and showing appreciation to the school board that week through our family newsletter and social media and our webpage. But I want to use our time right now to also, on behalf of our entire staff and our community, thank each of the seven of you for the work that you do as a school board. It's very, very much appreciated.
Thank you. All right. We're on to new business. Discussion on possible action on the 25-26 Milton High School Extended Field Trip Requests. Mr. Billhorn?
Are we going to plan out into the summer of 2027 the most international trips that have become quite popular on our own? Are there any questions about the trips this summer?
I got a question. So some of these are pretty far out.
Right.
And I know it takes a lot of time to plan for those. Let's just say that there's something happening with the destination. I mean, at what, obviously, we wouldn't put our kids at risk, but I mean, that's...
So any of our international trips, we work with, and there's a couple of different companies. We require our staff to work with a company that does work with State Department and some, so if there's a traffic ban or if there's a safety. We ran into this. Remember, once we stopped a trip to Europe when Ukraine was invaded by Russia. So we actually, we canceled the trip because of that. So we do take away those things. We work with the companies, obviously, we want to make sure that we're able to get the students' findings back, but that's something we are... We hope that doesn't happen, but...
Sure. Thank you.
But there's examples of that when we've done.
I'll make a motion to approve the 25-26 MHS Extended Field Trip Request as presented.
Second.
I have a motion from Rick, a second from John. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have middle school extended field trip requests.
Yes, so I know that this trip used to be an annual thing years and years ago, and last year was suddenly brought it back. So in my mind, it's kind of gone to the second annual, and hopefully we can continue that on. The goal is to take 40 students in four middle school classrooms to be seen and people, leaving on Monday on bus trip and returning on Friday.
How do you pick the 40? Or is it first come, first served?
Great question. So we started putting out that information last spring and then continuing to share information with students and families. We currently have 51 students interested, and once hopefully this is board approved, then we can have the official meeting of students and families. From that time, we may have some students taper off, otherwise it will be first come, first served with the registration meeting.
Thank you.
I move to approve the 25-26 Milton Middle School Extended Field Trip Request as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from Tracy, a second from Rick. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have fun.
All right. We move on to our miscellaneous items. Action on the staffing report.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
A second.
I have a motion from Rick, a second from Tracy. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action on gifts and donations.
I will make a motion to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude.
I'll second that.
I have a motion from John, a second from Rick. Any questions?
Rich, I do have a question. It says new Schulberg Park sign. Can you elaborate a little bit on what that is?
I can, yes. Yeah, that amount, and as you can see there, was a little under $11,000, was donated by a group called the Family and Friends of Schulberg Park. Fay Schulberg passed away, and it was donated to the district in her honor. And it's replacing the sign at the entrance of the park, which... which was showing some wear and tear.
That's very kind, thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Meetings.
We have a few different meetings, committee meetings and other things coming up. I'll go through those in chronological order between now and the next board meeting. Tomorrow evening is the Region 13 Wasbe Meeting in Burlington. That again is tomorrow evening. At that, Wasbe will recognize four of our board members for reaching a new level, John, Ed, Rick, and Joe. If folks that aren't able to attend that, we will bring that recognition back and present that at our next board meeting. We have an H R committee meeting, as Chris Tuchendorf mentioned, that's on Wednesday of this week at 3:45 in the first floor conference room. Again, that's H R, Wednesday at 3:45. It isn't an official meeting, but as mentioned earlier, homecoming week is next week, September 29th through October 4th, including board representation in the parade on Friday the 3rd at 2:00 P. M. And then the following week, we have two committee meetings, both on the same evening. The finance committee meeting will be at 6:00 on Monday, October 6th, and that will be in the first floor conference room. And that is scheduled to be a pretty short meeting. That will follow, be followed by the governance committee meeting, also on Monday, October 6th at 6:30 here in the P D C. So again, those two committee meetings are both on Monday, October 6th. 6:00 P. M. is the finance committee. 6:30 P. M. is the governance committee. And our next regularly scheduled board meeting is three weeks from tonight, on Monday, October 13th at 6:30 P. M. And one more item that's, that's coming up, it's not until 2026, but the Wisconsin State School Board Education Convention. The dates for that have been set. It is on January 21st through January 23rd, and that is in Milwaukee. And we're giving the board an update on that because registration is on Monday, November 3rd, both for the convention and for hotel rooms. And we want to make sure that board members have an opportunity to look over their calendars, let Chelsea know if you're able to attend, and if so, which dates, and if you'll need a hotel room. So Chelsea will be communicating out with the board, but look at your calendars, block dates off. And we've had great attendance from our board over the last few years, and it's a really valuable conference for board members to gather more information, do some learning together, and also interact with school board members from across the state.
I'm going to add just one more thing to put on your calendar. I had mentioned at the last meeting, we're going to do our second board development of the school year. And right now, we're looking at doing it after our board meeting on November 9th. We looked at the agenda from last year for the first meeting in November, it was pretty short. So we should be able to get through that quickly, and then we'll do our next board development. Or the 10th, I'm sorry. Nope. Oh, I'm still in 26, yes, the 10th. Yep. Alright, any other meeting dates? Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm going to, a motion from Rick, a second from Ed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries, and Carrie, thank you for, yeah, thank you.